Oh, okay. Hello, hello Sean, I'm gonna promote you to the panel. A little early, but here we on the panel.
Okay. Ah.
This meeting is being conducted by video conference. The public has been invited to watch the meeting on the city's YouTube channel, Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City Limits, or by logging into the Zoom video conference as an attendee. The public may submit comments and writing by email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. There will be opportunities for the public to give oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the email inbox, the Zoom participant list, and the Zoom chat to see if anyone would like to speak. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. Contamos con servicio de traducción al español cuando sea solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad para reuniones por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Translation services are also available in other languages. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. If members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Alright, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cuyahoga Etcetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Alright, tonight's announcements. Assist with developing the action plan for Milwaukee's urban renewal area. Applications for the Milwaukee Redevelopment Commission Community Advisory Committee are due on January 22nd. Visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov to learn more and apply. The city continues to seek nominations for the 2020 Volunteer of the Year. Nominees can include anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of a nonprofit organization or business that serves the Milwaukee community. Those nominating the person are asked to discuss the nominee's volunteer work and discuss how it has improved Milwaukee. Nominations are accepted through an online form at engage.milwaukeeoregon.gov. If you aren't able to access the online form, please call 503-786-7568, and other arrangements will be made for you to submit a nomination. Each year, libraries in Clackamas County look for help from local teens to design the teen summer reading artwork. Between January 2nd and 31st, young artists aged 12 to 18 can submit their original artwork for this year's theme, Reading Colors Your World. Cwwww.lincc.org for more details. Save the date for this year's state of the city address on Thursday, February 4th. Oh my god, that's coming up soon. At 5:30 PM, the event will take place virtually using Zoom. Check the city calendar for more information as the date draws near. For more information about each of these events and for others, please visit the city's homepage, where you can find the city calendar at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. If you don't have access to the internet, please call the city's general number at 503-786-7555, and staff will provide you with the information you need or connect you with someone who can help. Alrighty then. So, our first item up is the ever-popular Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award, which will be presented by our very own Principal, Ms. Gelman.
Hi, I've got Tyler trying to get him into the meeting.
Okay.
So I'm on the phone with him.
Alright.
Tyler, do you know what the screen name is? If you're in the panelist, if you're an attendee in the participants' lobby, if you could raise your hand if you're Tyler.
You should be coming in now. Okay.
I see him. There he comes.
Alright.
There you go. Welcome Tyler.
Sorry.
No worries.
Doing good.
Hi Tyler.
Hi.
Hi. Hi Tyler's mom.
Hello. I look horrible, I was doing something for work, I'm so sorry.
Don't be sorry, we're so excited.
I just came from work, I'm sorry.
Um. Okay, are we ready? Awesome. So, good evening everybody. I'm very excited today to introduce you to Tyler. Tyler Lenz over here. And I have to tell you that I met Tyler a couple years ago. And I remember just what a great kid he was then and still continues to be. And just such a wonderful young man. And I remember thinking in my mind, when he's a senior, I'm gonna nominate him because he's just so amazing. So, I was really excited to nominate Tyler for this award today. Tyler, I'm gonna read some things to you that your teacher said about you, and I'm not reading all of them. And I know I said this last time, but this time I got even more responses about Tyler. I just got so many comments from so many different teachers about him. But I'm not gonna read all of them because there's quite a few, so. Um. So, just a couple comments that some of the teachers said about you. Well, your football coach says that you played for the last three years. And through that time, you have grown tremendously. He has developed great relationships with his teachers and peers as he has thoughtful insight while also being a great listener. His passion and enthusiasm are contagious. I really enjoy having Tyler as part of our program. Insight while also being a great listener. Ms. Mary Lockard said that Tyler's such a great human being. He's got a beautiful heart and is a hard worker. During his sophomore and junior years here at Milwaukee High, he spent much of his time in our Student Learning Center for Academics classroom, mentoring other students. He would pop in every day to say hi and make sure that he connected with students. He formed great relationships with them, helped them with their work. He was a leader on the Unified Basketball Team, always encouraging the students. So enthusiastic for very little accomplishment a student would make. On the court or in the classroom, what a great job Tyler, and congratulations on his award. Thank you Tyler, and everyone in the SLCA classroom misses you. That's from Ms. Mary Lockard. Um. Ms. Cornell, who also works in the SLCA classroom, said that teachers don't generally like to have their classrooms disrupted. Tyler is the only student who has permission to interrupt and disrupt my classroom on any day at any time. Everyone in the room, including students and staff, is a Tyler Lenz fan. He is always welcome. Tyler is a friend to the kids who don't have friends. Tyler has conversations with non-verbal kids. When a kid can't keep up with the game, Tyler slows down the game and plays with everyone. He takes the time to include the kids who are left out. And hopefully, if I have my way, Tyler will someday join the next generation of special education teachers. That's from Ms. Cornell. Um, I had Tyler as a biology student, and my memories of him in class is that he was kind, helpful, and inclusive of every student. If I had a group that needed just one more member, Tyler would always volunteer. He would leave his own group of friends to work with this other group. I also recall that he came in outside of his class schedule to get clarification on work, and he always took me up on the opportunity to improve his grade by redoing assignments or making corrections to a test. He was stretched so thin with band, football, and his volunteer work with the Unified Basketball Team. I don't know how he found the time and energy to do it all, but he did. He definitely deserves this recognition as an outstanding community member. And then lastly, um. Having Tyler as a student first quarter this year was great. He exemplified the determination necessary to balance work, school, and life in the midst of a pandemic and its effects. Heck, he even managed to get his driver's license in the middle of all this. More than that, Tyler gave me and many of his classmates vocal encouragement during these trying times. His care for others is greatly appreciated during these tough times, Ms. Trokey. And like I said, I am not gonna read all of them because there's a lot. But I am also so grateful for you Tyler, and just, you know, it's really interesting because there's always these like go-to students that you can count on all the time, and Tyler is one of those. We often have students involved in our interview process, and they get to also interview as we're hiring new teachers and stuff. Tyler's been involved in several of those. He always comes into the student support office. He's just a great, wonderful person to be around. And he comes in to say hi to people, and he greets everybody. And I don't think I've ever seen Tyler be disrespectful or angry or... He's just a really positive young man. So, I'm honored to be your principal Tyler, and I'm so grateful for you. And mom, you've done a wonderful job with this young man. And I'm so proud of him for buying his own car, and you're just an awesome human being. So, thank you. Tyler Lenz, folks.
Tyler, yeah, there you go. I'm mute. Can you tell us more about what you're... We learned a little bit about what you're thinking about for your future, but I'd like to hear more. I'm particularly curious about your interest in the law and where you'd like to take that.
Yeah, so my plan is two years of Oregon Promise or CCC. Kind of save up some money and jumpstart my future. I want to finish my undergraduate at PSU, kind of stay close to home. But after that, I'm looking at going to law school to be like a defense attorney. Just kind of something in law, like it's very interesting to me. Just doing something in that aspect, basically.
Cool. Excellent. And tell us a little more about the SLCA.
Yeah. So, I volunteered my sophomore and junior year. And so with that, honestly, it was never something I really thought about before until I was kind of thrown into it. I had a best friend at the time, and his sister had volunteered in there. And so, honestly, the way to describe it is like you do it one day, and your heart gets so filled with joy that you can't stop going back. So, the kids in that class, they're so loving and kind, and they, you know... It's the small things that make you feel like you can never leave. I remember my sophomore year, sophomore, so I'll go to prom. But, you know, we got a prom, we had a prom day, you know, where like, the day at prom, we had all done a fundraiser and collected cans and stuff. So, we got like a party bus, and we had taken the trip to prom together as like students and then all of our teachers, basically. And it was just a really fun time, you know, like the kids, they love playing like sports and stuff. And when they don't get along, you know, I'm here to play mediator. And when sometimes they're not ready to get started in their class in the morning, you know, here I am, you know, like hey, you know, if we get this done, we'll take our walk to the office to say hi to Ms. Gelman or like do whatever, you know. Like there's, you know, it's just a fun time, you know. And it's like, you feel like you're living an impact in school, basically. You know, I feel, it's very rewarding for me as a person. Like I feel more happier when I'm doing that kind of work, you know, because those kind of, this uplifts me a lot, you know. It's just, it's always a good time in that class, and the kids always make me feel so loved and stuff. And I hope I do the same with them.
So, just a little bit, so you on all the SLCA classrooms is a self-contained classroom, and it's for students who have some cognitive delays. So, Tyler worked a lot with that population of kids.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to speak to Tyler's caring for others. So, for a hot minute, I was trying to coach football at Milwaukee High School. And Tyler really stood out to me because as an upperclassman, he really took the time to talk to the freshmen and sophomores who'd never played football, to show them what to do. And he was really respectful. He never took that, you know, I'm the older one here, and I'm gonna, you know, you're gonna listen to me. He pulled them aside and said, hey, let me help you. This is what you want to do. And it was really awesome to see an upperclassman do that to freshmen and sophomores and kids that had never played football before. So, you know, I witnessed it, and he does care for others. And it was just, he just did it. Nobody asked him to do it, he just did it. Thank you Tyler.
Thank you.
Alright, Lisa.
Hi Tyler, it's great reading about you. We haven't even touched on band. You were a trombonist. You are a trombonist?
Correct.
Um, I have come from a family of... My brother played trombone, and two of his sons now play trombone. Do you think you'd continue doing band in college?
Um, yes. It's hard because my plan was always like four years of university Oregon State. Obviously, the world around me has been uplifted with coronavirus. So, my plan's kind of shifted. But it's always been an interest in me, you know, staying motivated to continue. Band has obviously been harder because like the things that made me fall in love with band have kind of haven't been available. And like, for instance, I really love pet bands. It's like my favorite thing. Doing football pulled me away from football games for pet band, but going to the basketball games every year was fun. So, like, being able to do that at a college level would be like, you know, a dream of mine. So, I would definitely not rule it out. It's definitely, you know, the pathway of life for me. If it pops up, I would definitely take that opportunity, you know. And it really connects with my friends. All my friends that I've grown up with have been in band with me. So, you know, it's definitely like, definitely something I wouldn't pass up on, you know.
Well, I mean, several people have talked about your kindness to others, which is amazing. But I also noticed your flexibility, your ability to figure out what the current times demand. And the current times are demanding some change. And it's unfortunate that your four-year college, you know, idea doesn't make sense for you at this point in time. But I totally see that, and it's great that you're, you know, you're watching and engaging that and figuring out, you know, next steps. So, that's part of, you know, adulting, and you're well on your way. So, it's nice to see that. I will just say, since you did list lawyer as a career choice, I am the lawyer on the city council, and I would always be happy to talk to you as you get further down in your... I think, you know, you can study a lot of different things undergrad and then go to law school. You don't have to sort of, there's not a pre-law track. I mean, some colleges say there is, but there shouldn't be a pre-law track. You can go to law school with any undergrad degree. And so, follow your heart and do what you find interesting. And if you ever want to talk to anybody about law school, I'm happy to chat with you.
I might have to pick you up on that, thank you.
Lisa. I mean, sorry. Looked right at Angel and said, Lisa.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I know lots of lawyers. Of my professional career, I've always worked with lawyers. So, I, you know, and it's clear to me, you're, you know, the through line through everything is just that everyone has said about you is, you know, you're such an advocate for people. And, you know, you really clearly have a desire. And, you know, you have, it seems like you really get enjoyment out of helping others and sort of looking around the room, you know, for folks who just might need a little boost or an extra conversation or, you know. And I think that speaks so well of you. And it's too bad that we couldn't hear all of it from all the teachers because it sounded like Ms. G had quite a list there. And I would have, that just, the bit that she did read just really filled my heart. And so, I, you know, when you said that about, you know, the work that you do with some of your classmates, you know, saying that that filled your heart, really just sort of, it's just so impressive. And I'm so grateful to your mom. I hope she's still there, and she's hearing all of us reflect on what an amazing young person you are. Great job, mom. I think all of us parents would agree that, you know, if ever one of our kids needed a little extra helping hand at school, they'd have someone like Tyler there. And Ms. G, thank you again for making me cry, happy tears. You are just, I just really, I'm so grateful to you for the work that you do. And, you know, you elevate these amazing young people who show leadership and are so deserving of this award in so many different ways. So, thank you. And Tyler, sorry, I just rambled, but I just, I just didn't even want to give you... I just wanted to tell you how impressed I am. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you so much.
Alright, Kathy.
Tyler, I have to note, did you by any chance buy a Mustang?
I might have.
I'm clairvoyant. It's almost a, it's a thing, you know.
Yes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to meet you. And everyone's already said everything I can possibly say about how impressed we are and grateful that people like you are a part of the community in Milwaukee High School. You know, folks with your values are the folks who grow up and become part of this community as adults. And I hope you come back. It sounds like you like being around here, so that's a good sign. And, you know, a lot of folks have already mentioned that your kindness really shines in all of this. And I guess I'm just curious, kind of what the through line you might see between the kindness and the values that you have represented in just your daily life? I don't, I don't think you're doing it to make a point, you know, but just being who you are. How you want that to be part of your life moving forward into adulthood? You've clearly already got one foot in the adult world with the number of responsibilities you're carrying. But, yeah, how do you think that will stay with you as you move forward?
You just mean like how, like I will continue my actions going forward, basically?
Sure, yeah.
Well, I don't, you know, when I think about it, I really don't think I'm that like, I don't think the way I treat people is that unique. I just, I treat, you know, it sounds really cliche, but I wish people would treat me the way that I want to treat them, you know. So, I just say, like, you know, I was just kind of who I am. It was built in me by a really good foundation of good people, you know. My grandma and my grandpa and my parents growing up have always taught me, you know, about respecting people, you know. My, I had the grandpa that would, you know, jokingly tapping on the shoulder if I hadn't opened the door for my grandma, you know. It's about respect, about respecting people older than you, your teachers. And, you know, at the end of the day, how am I supposed to have like good relationships with my friends? Or like, you know, I think about what if I was the one? Because people could, if people weren't nice to me, like people could easily be not nice to me, you know, like, why would I want to? I wouldn't want to be treated badly, so why would I want to treat someone else badly? And it's, you know, some people may come to school every day and not... uh, sort of, there's not a pre-law track. I mean, some colleges say there is, but there shouldn't be a pre-law track. You can go to law school with any undergrad degree. And so follow your heart and do what you find interesting. And, uh, if you ever want to talk to anybody about law school, I'm happy to chat with you.
I might have to pick you up on that. Thank you.
Lisa. I mean, sorry, looked right at Angel and said, Lisa.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I know lots of lawyers. My professional career, I've always worked with lawyers. So I, you know, and, and it's clear to me you're, you know, the, the through line through everything is just that everyone has said about you is, you know, you, you're such an advocate for people. And, you know, you really clearly have a desire and, and, um, you know, you have, it seems like you really get enjoyment out of helping others and sort of looking around the room, um, you know, for folks who just might need a little boost or an extra conversation or, um, you know, and I think that's, that speaks so well of you and, and, it's too bad that we couldn't hear all of the, from all the teachers, because it's like Ms. G had quite a list there and I would have, that just, the, the bit that she did read just really filled my heart. And so I, you know, when, when you said that about, you know, the, the, the work that you do with some of your classmates, um, you know, saying that that filled your heart, um, really just sort of, it's just so impressive and I'm so grateful to your mom. I hope she's still there and she's hearing all of us, uh, reflect on what an amazing young person you are. Great job, mom. I think all of us parents would agree that, um, you know, if ever one of our kids needed a little extra helping hand at school, they'd have someone like Tyler there. And Ms. G, thank you again for making me cry and happy tears. You are just, I just really, I'm so grateful to you for, um, the work that you do and the, and, um, you know, you elevate these amazing young people who show leadership, um, and are so deserving of this award in so many different ways. So thank you. And Tyler, sorry, I just rambled, but I just, I just didn't even want to give you, I, I just wanted to tell you how impressed I am. So thanks for listening.
Thank you so much.
All right, Kathy.
Tyler, I have to note, did you by any chance buy a Mustang?
I might have, I might have.
I'm, I'm clairvoyant. It's almost a, it's a thing, you know? Well, thank you for the opportunity to meet you and everyone's already said everything I can possibly say about how impressed we are and, and grateful that people like you are a part of the, the community in Milwaukee High School. You know, folks with your values are the folks who grow up and become part of this community as adults. And I hope you come back. Um, it sounds like you like being around here, so that's a good sign. I, and, you know, a lot of folks have already mentioned that your kindness really shines in all of this. And I, I guess I'm just curious, um, kind of what the, the through line you might see between the kindness and the values that you have represented in, in just your daily life. I don't, I don't think you're doing it, um, to make a point, you know, but just being who you are. How, how you want that to be part of your life moving forward into adulthood? You've, you've clearly already got one foot in the adult world with the number of responsibilities you're, you're carrying. But, um, yeah. How do you think that will stay with you as you move forward?
You just mean like how, like I will continue my actions going forward, basically?
Sure, yeah.
Well, I don't, you know, when I think about it, I really don't think I'm that like, I don't think the way I treat people is that unique. I just, I treat, you know, it sounds really cliche, but I wish people would treat me the way that I want to treat them, you know? So I just say like, you know, I, I was just kind of who I am. It was built in me by a really good foundation of good people, you know? My grandma and my grandpa and my parents growing up have always taught me, you know, how about like respecting people, you know, my, I had the grandpa that would, you know, you know, jokingly tapping on the shoulder if I hadn't opened the door for my grandma, you know? It's about respect, about respecting people older than you, your teachers, and you know, at the end of the day, how am I supposed to have like good relationships with my friends? Or like, you know, I think about what if I was the one, because people could, if people weren't nice to me, like people could easily be not nice to me, you know, like, why would I want to? I wouldn't want to be treated badly, so why would I want to treat someone else badly? And it's, you know, some people may come to school every day and not get that love from people. Some people are, some people want to be outgoing and nicer to people, but they don't always have the courage to do it. And I think I have a pretty, pretty gung ho personality when it comes to just being able to be bold and like do things, you know? I won't see someone and be like, oh man, I wish I could do something. So, you know, I just feel like, you know, I'll just go approach them. And that's just kind of who I am. So, you know, I just keep up the same, you know, the same mindset about making people happy and trying to, you know, I guess just, it's about, it's only thing about in the moment, but when you reflect on it, it's about trying to make people's days brighter. Because at the end of the day, especially at school, when we had school in session, you don't know what they're going home to. To some people, school is a release, but like for me, you know, I don't want to go to school, but I know to some kids, that's like a release to them, you know? Like they go to school and that's where they can be happy and be their best. And, you know, or some people, like I said, for me, I don't like, sometimes I don't want to go to school. And so some, you know, if it's whether it's helping people, you know, who don't want to be there, be happier while they're there, or helping their people mentally who have to prepare to go back home to a rough situation, no matter what the, the circumstance at hand, and I want to help them, you know?
Well, thank you for bringing that energy to the world. We need it.
Thank you.
Wow. So you're clearly an extraordinary person. I mean, it takes, it takes a lot of focus and determination to just play football. Or to just be a jazz trombonist. You know, and you do those things and, and then you have the presence of mind and the presence of heart to, to look after people who are maybe in a bad way at the moment or disadvantaged in some way, or um, just could use some love and care. And that, that is extraordinary, sadly, but it is extraordinary. I think, you know, looking at your thoughts about your future, it's, um, it screams public defender. Because those folks, um, don't often get care. You know, it's, it's a public defenders are stretched thin and, um, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. So I don't know. I'll be very curious to see where you land.
Thank you.
I'm sure it will be extraordinary wherever it is. All right, Scott, could you please put up the certificate so I can read it and see it? There you go. The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Tyler Lentz, that will be known to all in this 19th day of January, 2021. The city of, the city council of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clarkhampton, state of Oregon, recognize this student as an excellent example of a bright future of this community and nation. And I will get that signed tomorrow. I'll come in the city hall and get that done. Uh, and at some point post-COVID, um, a lot of the stu-, almost all the students, but back when we were meeting in person, we would shoot a picture together. And, uh, if you, if you want to do a picture, I will be happy to do that when this is all over.
For sure.
Cool. All right. Everyone, Tyler Lentz.
All right, Tyler, thank you so much for joining us and for making this such an easy job for me. And, um, again, I'm just honored to be your principal.
No, thank you. Seriously, I really appreciate it. You know, it's nice, you know, some, it's been, you know, it's been a rough few days, you know, uh, just some personal stuff going on. And so, you know, I really, sometimes the, the words, you know, they mean a lot to me.
Came at a good time.
It came at a good time, we'll say that. I had a really bad weekend. So, you know, this is, it really means a lot, you know? It's words I can take forward into a pretty good learning curve in the future, you know? So I really, it means a lot, especially right now more than ever, hearing, you know, these nice comments, seriously, it means a lot.
Yeah, thank you for acknowledging him and, um, you know, saying amazing and kind and nice things, you know, it's really nice to, you know, we like to believe as our, you know, with our kids that we instill in them goals and dreams and, um, respect. Respect is huge in our household. Um, I've taught that. I didn't, to be honest with you, I never really thought that I would get married, you know, I was a young mom. And, um, so I've always taught my kids respect from a very, very young age and it's something that I take pride and I take joy in. Um, you know, my, we lost my grandfather, Tyler's grandfather here a couple of months ago. And, you know, Tyler wants to go stay with her just to help her do chores that she's not able to do by herself. So it's like, you know, those sort of things is like, okay, he gets it, you know? So it's, it's nice to know that I feel a certain way, but when people near that and feel the exact same way, it just makes it, kind of makes the world go round. So I appreciate it and I thank you guys so much for all the kind words.
Thank you, Tana.
Totally. Thank you for doing such a great job raising your son.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay on or you can go now if you'd like. And Tyler, I'll go ahead and send you all the comments, okay?
Thank you, seriously.
All right.
All right. Any updates on the world of education? We, we now have, uh, we have an insider now on, on the council. But, um, love to hear from your perspective, what, if, uh, if things have changed, gotten better, gotten worse.
Well, interestingly enough, I'm on Governor Brown's Healthy Return to School Council. Um, and it's interesting because a lot of folks think that we have decision-making power as members of the council and we don't. Um, we do get to go and talk about what our community is going through and all of that stuff. And we need, we get to share that with the, with the governor and other folks and we get to meet with doctors and stuff. So when we met, we were told that we were going to get the vaccine starting January 23rd. So I got really excited because you know, that's closer to getting kids back into school. Um, and then found out that evening that there was no reserves. So now we're just waiting. And school, you know, we're just constantly trying different ways to connect with kids. We have, um, several different engagement teams, um, one for each grade level where they're reaching out to folks. We've been conducting empathy interviews, um, with a lot of our EL population. Um, because they, because our EL population struggles to like know how to use the technology and the parents don't really know a lot of times how to get on to technology. So that's been a little bit of a challenge. However, we have evening meetings with the parents twice a month for the EL community. Um, we have forecasting coming up. I'm super excited about next year. Sorry, Tyler. Um, we're gonna, we're forecasting for dance. So now that we're in the new building, our dance studio before was the library. And so that's been redone. We have an amazing dance studio. So we are going to forecast for cultural dance. So kids get an opportunity to do, um, folklorico, African dance, um, two-step, right? Like we're going to bring in lots of different cultures and they'll get units of different dance. And also, um, we're going to work with the community. So for example, I've got parents that teach folklorico and they'll come in and they'll help teach it. So it's really important to bring community into the classroom. And we've been doing a lot about like creating a culture, but now that we're in the new building, my goal is to really have more community and have it be a community space. Um, and then, um, so I think that will be awesome. We are introducing music theory as well, where kids can do different kinds of music and recordings and um, we want to diversify what we offer in music. Um, and we're also adding some more rigorous courses, uh, statistics, a couple of research courses. So we're just trying to really think about what is it that our kids are asking for? What do they need? Those kinds of things. Uh, we, out of all the high schools in the district, I believe, were the, the school that's, um, increased in numbers. So we're excited about that. So Milwaukee was going down for a few years and as far as attendance or how many students. And we went up this year in the middle of a pandemic, so I'm super excited.
I told Matt that was gonna happen. He didn't believe me. Three years ago.
Yeah, I mean, definitely a beautiful building and, um, all of that stuff. I also feel like there's a lot of work, um, be, like, my teachers are amazing. Um, I, I feel like overall I have some really good teachers, um, and just creating that community and that culture where kids want to be there. I think when we open up the doors, I think more kids are going to want to be there. Um, you know, we, we work a lot on building relationships with our students, getting to know them. Um, so like having Tyler come through with other kids to say hi to all of us. That's, that's kind of the norm, you know what I mean? Like my office is open a lot. Kids come through all the time. It's just a normal, we're a family. So, um, yeah, right now we're in the middle of forecasting for next year. Um, we're still running things. We just had a choir concert, uh, last week. We're still doing theater. Our leadership class is gonna do, um, is going to do the lip sync contest this year with all the grade levels. They're also going to be decorating t-shirts. They have a whole plan set up. And our students are also designing lessons for our community connections class. So they did their first lesson. The next lesson they're going to do is on intent versus impact. So our equity team is going to train the staff first in the morning on what equity versus impact is. And then during our CNC lesson, the staff will give the lesson that the kids created to the students. And it's also on, um, intent versus impact. So both groups, because you know, the adults need it too, right? We don't always like, right? Like we don't always intend to.
There's a whole bunch of adults that need that.
And then, you know, and then so that way when the kids get it, that the adults also have the language and all of that. A really cool thing that we're doing is we're working with a nationally recognized, um, Dr. Danelle Dickey, who's nationally recognized and he does a lot of work, um, across the country. And it's around, um, teaching teachers how to make sure that all of our students can access the academic language. So tier-two vocabulary. And so, you know, a lot of students that struggle, whether it's, um, it's all of our ki- kids, right? Or maybe they're behind in reading or they're behind, you know, being able to like, to access the vocabulary and like math and science and all those things. That's where a lot of kids get lost if they don't know what something means and they don't ask, you know? So, um, Dr. Dickey is going to work with us this year and next year to make sure that all the teachers are making sure that kids understand what certain words mean. And it doesn't mean water down the word. It just means put another word next to it. So you're still, still learning the word that's, that's more difficult, but you also like are breaking it down so kids really understand what it means. So I've already, he presented once, I was in classrooms and teachers are already, you know, implementing these strategies. So I'm very excited about that. Yeah, we have a bunch of initiatives and, and I don't want to take up more time, but, you know, next time we talk, I can talk about some of our other initiatives that we have got, going on. We really haven't slowed down.
No, I, the sense I'm getting is that you guys are actually working harder than ever with us.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, um, I just have to say, I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to come in front of you all and just present our students. And I have so many that I could bring forward. I'm just really blessed. So, thank you.
We're blessed to have you. Thank you.
Ms. G, can I just, I, I, everything that you just said, all the things that you talk about, all the initiatives that you've got going on and, and probably even some that we don't get to hear about. You know, I just, I, I find your, you know, that you're the community connections, the community in the classroom, you know, I think that, I guess that just what I want to say is thank you. I mean, I feel like you're providing, you know, such an enriching place, not just for your students and your teachers, but for this whole community. And I'm really grateful to that. And I'm only disappointed that, you know, I'm not a current student, that I don't get to participate in all of this. And if there was a way that we could just sort of tap in and learn from you, you know, not create any more work for you, um, I'd sure like to know how we get that done because I just think that you're doing amazing things that, you know, really benefit the whole community. And, um, you're just a shining example of who we should all strive to be. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You know, I had a really rough past and did not succeed in school. And so I just know what I wish I would have had and I just love our kids. And I've just seen such a like opportu-, I've been doing this for 15 years. And to watch kids that I had 15 years ago and how they're thriving and with family. And some of these kids would, they just wouldn't have made it, you know? And I think school is a place where we can really impact kids' lives. And so thank you for that, because it means a lot to me.
All right. Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Mayor, I think Desi may have had a.
Oh, sorry.
Speaking as a teacher and knowing all the teachers at work with, uh, Principal Gellman, they love her. I wish I was a high school teacher. I would love to work for her. But unfortunately, I'm only K-8. And I have, fifth grade's a good spot for me right now, but I just know that every teacher that I talk to absolutely adores you, uh, Principal Gellman. So you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Desi. All right, you guys.
Take care. Okay. Community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community members' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak, please raise your hand or indicate you wish to speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. This council has other business items on the agenda this evening. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during the community comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require a follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from January 5th community comments? It's over.
There are not. Thank you, sir.
All right, Scott, anybody?
I don't see any email. I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okeydoke. Well, if somebody gets on while I'm doing the consent agenda, we can get them after that. But let's hop into the consent agenda. Uh, tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the December 15th, 2020 work session, the December 15th, 2020 regular session, a resolution acting as the local contractor review board approving a contract for the construction of Lake Road Improvements Project to Goodfellow Bros. LLC. A motion to approve the 2021 council committee assignments. A motion to approve a council letter to the Oregon Marine Board requesting a no-wake zone on the Willamette River. Uh, does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? And I would entertain a motion.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as written.
Oh, second?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All of those in favor? I. Opposed. None heard. It passes unanimously.
Can I just, uh, comment on a couple of things? One is Lake Road, woo-hoo!
Right?
We have been wanting to fix Lake Road forever and ever, and it's exciting that it's happening. And, uh, I guess one nice thing, you know, one silver lining of the pandemic is that Lake Road, you know, and the school project and all of that will tie together, uh, nicely by the time kids are back in school or, well, I don't know when kids will be back in school, so I shouldn't assume that. But certainly by the, you know, next fall with the return of school and the next school year. Um, so it's super exciting to have Lake Road launch. And, uh, on the Oregon Marine Board, I just wanted to remind folks that, uh, public comments are due next Monday. And, uh, anything you could do to get the word out to people in the community that you think are interested in commenting and supporting the call for a no-wake zone, uh, I think will be helpful. It's important that the Marine Board hear from as many people as possible since we're asking for something that was not part of their proposed rule. Thank you.
Good, thanks. All right. Still nobody, Scott? Okay. Then we will go to uh, public hearing. Temporary housing code and ordinance. The public hearing on the proposed temporary housing code is called to order. Purpose of this hearing is to take public comment on the proposed code. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Nope, seeing none. The staff report will be given by senior planner, Vericolius.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Vericolius, Senior Planner, to present the staff report for this code amendment. Before I begin, I just want to let councilors know that Samantha Vandegrift, the building official, is also on the call. Sean Olson, Clackamas Fire District Fire Marshal, and Leila Mon, Community Development Director, are all here as part of the hearing. So if you have questions as we go through this that are particular to their areas of expertise, they are here to answer your questions. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. It will work. Is everyone looking at a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, so this is a follow-up. We had a, a work session with council regarding these proposed amendments. What staff is, let's see, let's switch the slide there. Okay. Staff is proposing a two-phase approach to temporary and transitional housing in the city. The first phase is to formalize a process for temporary emergency shelters for warming, cooling, or hazardous air quality. The second phase is going to be focused on updating the community service use, or the CSU section of the zoning code as it relates to transitional housing. And staff has already begun working internally on draft code language and will conduct outreach to service providers to refine those proposed changes before coming back to council in the second part of this year. So that is, that's coming. But this proposed code amendment, um, it's, that are the subject of this hearing are to allow temporary emergency shelters for warming, cooling, or hazardous air quality as temporary use permits in the code section 11.05. The permit is specifically intended for seasonal, short-term emergencies that arise during extreme weather conditions. Staff is proposing to adopt a joint policy with Clackamas Fire District Number One for emergency shelters in existing structures for warming, cooling, again, and hazardous air quality. The shelters would be subject to the minimum requirements that are outlined in that joint policy that was included as an attachment to the staff report. Um, attachment number two, I believe. Um, and those requirements include provisions for things like life safety, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, means of egress, responsible person in charge, et cetera. Um, the, the code also, the proposed code talk, code language talks about a limitation to no more than 90 days in any 12-month period with a 30-day extension permitted as part of the code. During the work session on December 15th, council raised several issues related to the code language, including the use of basements for the shelter, the duration of the permit, the process to amend the joint policy, and clarification on the jurisdictional authority that was mentioned in the policy. So I'll go over those to make sure that we're all clear and fall, and circle back on those comments that came up as part of that work session. So regarding the use of basements, the joint policy as written excludes basements from being used for shelter space unless the building has sprinklers. And the question that came up at the work session was about daylight basements. And um, and why can't those be used for shelter space? And staff believes that the concern raised by council is actually solved for within the current law. When, and there's a whole bunch of language in the staff report from the building code that talks about basements. But um, the, we call things daylight basements, but they're, they're probably not basements as defined by the code. And again, Samantha Vandegrift is here that can talk about any of those building code issues. But um, when talking about a space that qualifies for the temporary use permit, the building official will use the definition of basement. And it, so if a portion of a building has its floor below ground level on all sides, a story that is not a story above the grade plane, there's a whole bunch of definitions that talk about what is a basement and what is not a basement. So the key issue is that if the proposed shelter space does not meet the definition of a, of a basement per the building code, then it can be used as shelter space. And some daylight basements are actually great, um, above grade plane spaces. So they very likely are not, in fact, basements as defined by the code. So I think the bottom line is that, for the most part, it would appear that what we would generally think of as a daylight basement would likely qualify as still being able to be used as shelter space, because it would not meet the definition of a basement in the code. Are there any questions about that?
So looking at the diagram that you've got on the lower example, it says story B is not considered a basement, which I wouldn't have considered a basement anyway, since it's above the bottom floor. But story A is still daylighted. Right? There could be a door that comes out.
Right.
And is that considered a basement?
Maybe this is a good time for Samantha to chime in on here. I don't want to pret- I try, I tried not to pretend to be an engineer during the work session. I don't want to pretend to be a building official during the public hearing either. Samantha, can you?
We depend on how much of that floor is open to, is not below grade.
So if there is one entire face of that building that is is not below grade and has a doorway, you know, an external doorway out onto the ground level, is that sufficient? Or is there other more nuanced?
So the definition of a basement is a story that is not a story above grade plane. And I have a definition. I know we had a question about the definition of a grade plane. Um, sorry, I'm flipping back in my code here. Um, grade plane is so the grade plane is a reference plane representing the average of finished grade ground level adjoining the building at exterior walls. Where the finished ground level slopes away from the exterior walls, the reference plane shall be established by the lowest points within the area between the building and a lot line, or where the lot line is more than six feet from the building, between that building and a point six feet from the building. So what it's trying to get at is you, you establish that grade plane so you can say, yes, this is above or this is below um, the, the median level. So I'm gonna go back, because basement says story above, a story that is not a story above grade plane. And then story above grade plane is defined as, if I can find it real quickly here. Uh, story above grade plane. So any story having its finished floor surface entirely above grade plane, or in which the finished surface of the floor mixed above is more than six feet above the grade plane, or more than 12 feet above finished ground level at, at any one point. So if your floor is more than six feet above the grade plane, then it is, uh, it's not considered a basement. So if we, if you have that, um, the daylight part of it, and the, and it's more than, it's six feet or less, or six feet or more above the grade, then you're, it's not considered a true basement. Am I making sense?
It's hard to follow, and I would ima- and, and we're used to listening to and reading code. Imagine some minister who has a church with a daylight basement is not necessarily going to be able to ascertain whether or not they can use it. Why, why wouldn't it be easier to simplify it and simply say, if there is no external doorway?
Well, a- and the reason we look at it that way is because even if you have a daylight basement, the, the areas where they're sleeping at may not be the areas where the exits are. A lot of times, those are at the back part of where that basement is, and they're still trapped. So when we're looking at basements, we're wanting to make sure that they have not only that one door where the daylight is, but another means of escape. Usually what we have is, uh, you know, egress windows. Anytime we have a place where somebody's sleeping, we require not only the exit door, but egress windows. And if you have three sides of a basement that are uh, below grade and only one side that is kind of daylighted, you're still creating an area that somebody can get trapped into. This is really going to be site-specific. And when we have people that are gonna come in, it's, they're gonna have to show me what their floor layout looks like. And we're, it, it, we're just gonna have to determine whether this meets the definition of a basement in this specific case or not.
So I had the same question. I mean, my, my memory of our conversation last time was that we were talking about egress, not just specifically daylight basements. I could be wrong. I haven't gone back to listen to the tape. But we, we allow, as long as a sleeping room has egress, we allow that in even permanent, and maybe this is more for discussion. But that, my que- my question's similar to the mayor's, which is, why isn't it just simpler to say if a, if a, if a temporary shelter has egress, a door or a window that meets the, the fire code for egress and the building code for egress, why can't we adopt that in this? And why do we have to even ask this question about, you know, this complicated question about what is and what isn't a basement? I mean, I'm glad to see that some of the things that I wouldn't even consider a basement aren't considered a basement. I'm glad that that makes sense and it's common sense. But I agree. I think that this is really complicated, and I, I want to say unnecessarily complicated. When for permanent housing, for permanent ADUs, we allow something more than, than this. And this isn't even permanent housing. This isn't, this isn't even transitional housing. This is temporary shelter for people to get out of the smoke.
We would not allow anything below grade without full sprinklers in an ADU, in a residential, a- any type of sleeping uh, atmosphere. We would never, we would not allow per my code, anything that was not sprinklered to have anything below grade.
Is that a change?
No.
I, I don't think that was the code, I don't know, seven, eight years ago.
Uh, it has been since the International Code Council took over. ICC became the, the prominent code. Um, and the last uniform building code we had was 1997. So the ICC came in, um, in 2000. And since then, every, in commercial entities, every um, our occupancy, which is residential occupancy, is required to be sprinkled.
So you're saying a basement ADU has to be sprinkled?
And i- if it was a true basement, which we have, we have, we don't have any of those in Milwaukee that I can think of that would be considered a true basement without egress. I mean, we, they put in the egress windows, they put in the below grade with the, the wells, the window wells. And, and so they have egress out of those with the window wells and the, and a stairs. And that's how they get away with not sprinkling any of those, is they, they provide that window well egress. But for any type of commercial entity, it would have to be sprinkled.
Okay, I, that's what, that's what my, that's my question. So, I mean, I, for, like, for a, a non-commercial, and maybe that's where this is, gets a little bit more complicated. But for residential, for, you know, a, a single dwelling detached house that wants to convert a basement and installs egress windows, or an egress door that steps down, it's qualifies as a basement, we do allow that to be converted into sleeping area, correct?
Correct. Correct. I'm sorry. Yes. In a residential, in a single-family house.
Yes.
That way. In a single-family house, if they can provide egress windows and they can provide uh, an access door, then we would, we would, we, in fact, we have one that we have allowed to um, put in a basement ADU. But for commercial code, it's a little, it's more complicated, just because everything, every residential occupancy in the commercial code is required to have sprinklers, regardless if it's below grade, above grade, any type of uh, residential is required to have sprinklers. So we're allowing them to go in a non-sprinklered building already. And this just creates an additional hazard, having them down in the basement where you've got, the firefighters have got to get down into an enclosed area. And it's about, it's, it's much about them and protecting them in this type of atmosphere as it is about protecting the people that are inside that, and inside the church, or inside the area that's being used.
Well, and, and I can, I would have another concern here where I'm hearing us talk about an egress. And when you are dealing with a residential property where it's a bedroom, or maybe two bedrooms, or what have you, it's a small number of people. When you're talking about a shelter, a temporary use shelter, then you have a considerably larger number than one or two people in a, in a enclosed space. I, I don't know that an egress would be adequate for safety in that situation. I mean, if you've got 30 people who are all trying to get out of one window or one door, uh, that, in the event of a fire, that sounds terrifying.
Yes. Yes.
So, uh, yeah. So I, I guess I'm not, I, I'm not sure how that part, I'm not sure what I'm trying to say in relation to uh, the diagram we're looking at right now. Other than I can, I guess I can see the point of talking about egress specifically may, may not may have its limitations and really considering fire safety in particular.
Good evening, everyone. Can I chime in just real quick?
Sure.
Um, so I think the, the biggest concern in the discussion with basements, but basements is literally your worst-case scenario when it comes to fire. Uh, that is the worst-case scenario for citizens, worst-case scenario for firefighters in conducting any type of suppression operations, or even looking for citizens. So we've talked a lot on the, on the exiting component of it. And going back to that and making sure that, say, for example, we receive an application, or we see, receive an inquiry from a church who does have a basement-type scenario. Myself, Ms. Vandegrift, will go out, conduct a site visit, and determine, based on the components that we have here in front of us, making sure that there are physical exit windows and physical exit doors to facilitate that temporary housing. If we come across a scenario where we have a church that has a legitimate basement that doesn't have egress doors to the outside ground floor, um, on my end, honestly, that would be very difficult to approve to put people in that scenario. If it was sprinkled, different story. Non-sprinkled, I will probably honestly say that would be a big no, just because of what I've seen in my experiences and the circumstances based on the fire code. So it, it's like Sam said, each one is really taken um, on a case-by-case basis. But then everything would be applied here, as you see in front of you, relating to the fire code and the building code as a joint effort. So it's, I, I have been confused also years with the, what determines a basement. But honestly, when it comes down to it, is the egress component and what that looks like? And what do we feel comfortable with putting our name on it? So that's my two bits for the moment.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that, Sean. That's kind of what I was trying to get to, was that if it's deemed to have sufficient egress, it matter, no matter what the, the various permutations of the algorithm that determines whether something's a basement or not exist, I would hope that we would err on the side of allowing that, because that what I'm thinking about is, you've got 20 people that can be inside or can't be inside. And if it's gonna hit 20 below zero that night, and they're not inside, we guarantee that some of those people are gonna die. Whereas if they're inside, the likelihood that there's a fire is really small to start with. And then the likelihood that, you know, everybody dies in that fire is even smaller. So it, it's just, it's, it's a, the point I'm trying to make is, you know, we have to consider what we're balancing it against. So I don't want some arbitrary system that isn't based on exactly what you said. Can they safely get out? Can the fire department safely get people out? Then I'm less interested in the algorithm of whether something's a basement or not, as I am with whether it will work.
Yeah, I, I.
That's why we do the site visit, why Sean and I do that site visit on every one of these, is because every one of them is a unique situation. Sometimes you can use one specific area, but you can't use this other area. So we, when we go in, we're looking at what is, where's the best place to house these people? And at what is, where's the best place to house these people? And what's the best scenario for everybody to keep everybody safe, but also get them in off the streets?
Yeah, and I totally agree. You know, it's, that paints that picture of that worst-case scenario in a couple of different avenues. It's like, one, we're trying to protect the public, we're trying to ensure their well-being, we're trying to provide them a safe place to shelter. But if we're presented with something similar to that scenario where we, a place of worship has a basement, we'd like to put them in there, my thing is going to be, it's like, okay, we have alternate areas. I'm not going to, it won't be denied, it's going to be more of like, okay, where can we compromise and come up with a better solution than putting them in a death trap of a basement? So, yeah, it's a balance. But it's like, your ultimate goal is to make sure people are protected from the outside weather, but yet protected from fire. And we're all on the same page. So it's, yeah.
Good. Great. Well, hopefully in 10 years or something, we won't have to worry about this because we'll actually have enough housing for everyone. But until that point, we want to make this as functional as possible and as easy for, you know, a minister at a church to figure out. Because I can see, totally see somebody getting dissuaded just by the, you know, difficulty in understanding the code.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. It's, yeah. It's definitely taking each case-by-case. And this whole scenario, what you guys are doing is awesome. And what we're doing with the joint bulletin is, and joint policy is really going to help. Because it's going to lay out that foundation and let people know, here's the criteria, work with fire, work with building, let's meet in the middle and try to come up with a solution to it. So.
Cool. Thank you. And thank you for your, everything that you do. We appreciate it. All right. Is there, are there other things?
Yes. Can we, can we move forward from the, from basements? Can we get out of the basement?
We can get out of the basement.
Okay, okay.
Can I just say, I mean, I think, I'm not going to challenge, you know, I'm okay with where we are on this. But I will say, this whole diagram, as somebody who's, you know, spent nine years on the planning commission, this whole explanation of what's grade plane and what's a story below grade plane is really not making sense to me. So, I mean, I just, you know, it's one of, yeah. I've been trying to, from what Samantha read to us, I've been trying to redesign these charts to see, based on what I heard. And, I mean, I just, it's a crazy, it's a crazy piece of code writing, but.
And this actually comes from the commentary that's to help us define it.
That's frightening, Samantha.
Well, this is why the joint policy only uses the word basement, and that's all it says. So, so that Samantha and Sean can help people figure out if they're in a basement or not, I think. This was meant to help, and I'm sorry I put it in the presentation.
Will Sean be around for the duration of this portion? I'm just, I'm just curious if when we get to the part where we're discussing and maybe making some suggested tweaks, if there's going to be, you know, opportunity for feedback.
I'm here until the end tonight. Not here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next piece that was discussed as part of the work session was the duration of the permit, the fact that it's 90 days with the 30-day extension. And the way, and so as further explanation, what we would, how we would sort of manage this is that a facility would be issued one 90-day permit for the whole year. They wouldn't have to keep coming back for any issue or incident or something like that. But the, sort of the general explanation of this is that the building code was designed, I'm sort of reading this from the staff report because I want to make sure I get it right, was designed to maintain the safety of inhabitants. When the section of code was written, it was with recognition that it takes time for organizations to come into compliance with the code, with the building code. And it was written to keep pressure on the applicant to make the desired improvements to meet the building code requirements. Staff, and again, at some point, I'm happy to have Sam chime in here, but staff in general has utilized this for a different purpose than the code was originally intended. So the idea of being able to interpret this, that for limited amounts of time, there might be a short period of time where it's okay to not meet the code for a particular reason. And that's what this temporary emergency issue is intended to deal with, that there's this short period of time where it's okay because we have this emergency that's happening. Individual nights when the safety of a person is more imperil by being on the street than sleeping in a non-sprinklered building. Because again, these are commercial buildings that we're allowing people to sleep in. They weren't designed or built to be, you know, inhabited that way. So, and again, so when temperature or air quality could injure or kill someone sleeping outside without adequate protection. So that's sort of this interpretation that we've, that we've collectively made to allow these temporary housing situations to happen. And we put this in the staff report, and I do want to sort of emphasize, this is not a solution for houselessness. This is a way that we can address a very immediate, specific health and safety issue for folks that are sleeping outside. The code recognizes that sometimes problems with construction occur, and maybe there's more time that's needed beyond 90 days. So we're sort of using that kind of way of being able to include this, an extension of the 30 days, so that we can stay within the intent of the building code, and also the intent of being able to provide these temporary emergency opportunities for folks to come inside and not have to be outside. So all the permits require planning approval, approval of community development director, joint inspection with building and fire. So a facility would be issued a 90-day permit for, to cover all emergency events for the year, and they would not have to get a separate permit each time. But that's, I know there was some discussion with council about why is it only 90 days? And this is why. And I'm happy to have Samantha weigh in if she needs to, if there's questions from council. But where the 90 days with the 30-day is sort of where, where staff is continuing to recommend that the permit be issued. Are there any questions or concerns about that? No? Okay. All right. Let's see. So updating the policy, there were some questions about that. And its relationship to the code language, it's referenced within the code, so that the joint policy sort of sits outside the code, and that's something that can be updated as things arise. Right now, it's, you know, there's the spacing requirement that's in there is related to COVID. So their staff would continue to coordinate with Clackamas Fire with the district on any proposed changes to the policy. So that's why it's outside of the code. So it's something that, that can be updated as needed. And then there were some questions about how the word jurisdiction is used within the code, and within the joint, sorry, within the joint policy itself. And so we talked with Samantha about kind of clarifying that, that the Oregon Fire Code gives the fire district certain authority, and then the building code gives building officials certain authority from the state. So regarding, there's conditions that are hazardous to life, property or public welfare, that's the fire district authority. And then once a certificate of occupancy is issued, now the building official is under the, it's under the purview regarding any temporary change of use, that's the building official. So when we use the term jurisdiction within the joint policy, it's a joint venture and the authority is both. It can be the fire, it can be fire or building. It sort of depends on where we are in this scenario. So using the term jurisdiction rather than something more specific is appropriate in this case, because it is a joint venture between both fire and building. Because they both, they both have, it's applicable to both of them within any one of these conditions or situations. So we're not recommending that we change any of those words of jurisdiction. We'll leave it like that, so that it covers both fire and building. So that's the end of the presentation. I wanted to make sure that I clarified those questions that had come up at the last work session. Our recommendation is to approve the amendment per the ordinance and the findings that were included in the staff, with the staff report. Happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Sean or Samantha would be happy to answer any questions as well. But I will stop sharing. And can move forward with the hearing if there's any questions or clarifications that are needed.
I'm not seeing anybody. So I'm going to sort of touch on the question that I called you about.
Mm-hmm.
Shelters for warming, cooling, or hazardous air quality subject to the Milwaukee Clackamas Fire District Joint Policy for Temporary Emergency Shelters. It doesn't, that doesn't encompass other things for which we might need temporary shelters, like earthquakes, or volcanic eruption, or a flood situation, or some other natural disaster. Can you walk us through? Because you answered it, but I wasn't clear on why that fixed it. So.
Sure. Well, so there's, you know, if something that, okay, so if there is a volcanic eruption, then, or maybe that's not a really good example, because I think that's a bigger issue than a temporary housing thing for us to fix.
It's also hazardous air quality, right? You get in with hazardous air quality there.
Right. Yeah, the way the code is written right now, there's, you know, item G, which is sort of this catch-all, where other temporary uses similar to the ones listed above, as determined by the city manager. So we don't need sort of an exhaustive list of all of the other ways or other incidents that could happen. The city manager has the authority to trigger something. If there was an isolated flood somewhere where some households were displaced for a period of time, the city manager could issue a temporary use permit for that. If there's something bigger, a bigger natural disaster, something that's going to take much longer to address housing, that's something that the emergency operations center, that's an EOC kind of emergency responder thing that happens. It's outside, I think, of what this temporary use permit was intended to cover. This was intended to cover really specific, small, kind of seasonal kinds of issues like this. So I take your point, Mr. Mayor, of course. I think the existing language covers it, because I think we've got the flexibility, flexibility in there in item G for the city manager to make that call. And then the bigger natural disasters and those bigger issues are something that get covered via the EOC. And they're planning for longer-term kinds of displacement and housing that can cover those sorts of situations. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. I know that the next question I'm supposed to ask is, do we have any correspondence on this?
I've not received any. Vera, have you received any?
I have not, no.
Nope.
Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed temporary housing code?
I don't have any emails, Mr. Mayor, and I don't at the moment see any hands raised or comments in the chat either.
Okay, so can I skip the whole paragraph on that?
Yeah.
Since there is no testimony, there's none for staff to respond to. Counsel's been asking questions of staff. Do you have any further questions of staff? Not seeing any. If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on temporary housing code. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None heard or seen. Public testimony portion of the public hearing on the temporary housing code is closed. Is there counsel discussion?
I'll say thank you for responding to the concerns about time. I think that that was a good, where we landed on the 90 days not being a one-time, you know, that it's, recognizes that there could be a 30-day event in the summer, and a 30-day event in the winter, and a 30-day event in the spring. You know, I imagine smoke, cold air, and flooding. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's, and I think my other, I'm grateful that the joint policy can perhaps be amended to better reflect sort of where we all recognize we want to be. I'll look forward to maybe some discussions about that. So, but I think for, in terms of the actual code, I'm good.
I'm fine with it. I, I think, you know, let's get it out there. And if it needs tweaking down the line, it needs tweaking down the line. But it's good to have it, have something out there to work from.
Okay. So is counsel ready to vote? Seeing a whole lot of not anything. Nod your head if you're ready to vote for something. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to, I need to get here, sorry. I move for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code chapter 11.05.010 Temporary Uses, Permits, and Regulations for the Purpose of Clarification and Allowing Cooling and Warming Shelters. File number ZA-2020-001.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded for the first and second readings only by title only, first and second readings by title only, and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code chapter 11.05.010. Temporary Uses, Permits, and Regulations for the Purpose of Clarification and Allowing Cooling and Warming Shelters. File number ZA-2020-001. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard or seen. It passes unanimously. Ms. Ober, would you read the ordinance by title only twice?
Would happily do it, as I'm searching to read it. Hold one second. Apologize.
I'm sorry, Anne.
Okay. I'm just trying to find it. There it is. Okay, so an ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code chapter 11.05.010 Temporary Uses, Permits, and Regulations for the Purpose of Clarification and Allowing Cooling and Warming Shelters. File number ZA-2020-001. And again, an ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code chapter 11.05.010 Temporary Uses, Permits, and Regulations for the Purpose of Clarification and Allowing Cooling and Warming Shelters. File number ZA-2020-001.
Mr. Stocker, would you please pull over, counsel?
It's your, Counselor Beatty.
Aye.
Counselor Nicodemus.
Aye.
Counselor Hazy.
Aye.
Counsel President Faulkner.
Aye.
Mayor Gamba.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance number 2198.
All right. Business items, Moses Lake Industries Enterprise Zone and Agreement. This is a resolution, and this will be presented by our Development Project Manager, Allison Wicks.
Thank you. And Scott, there's a couple of folks in the attendees that I'd like to let into the panel.
Can you remind me of those names?
Should be Cindy.
Yep.
Mark and Laura.
There they come.
Great. And I'll share my screen. We can do some introductions.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Did Laura get in, Scott? There she is. Okay. Did Laura get in, Scott? There she is. Okay.
Yep, yep.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor Gamba, councilors. I'm Allison Wicks. I'm the Development Project Manager for the City of Milwaukee, and I'm here with Cindy Moore. Cindy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Most certainly. Good evening, Mayor Gamba and councilor. Cindy Moore, Clackamas County, Part of Business and Community Services, Economic Development Division.
And then we also have Mark Wiley and Laura Mance with us from Moses Lake Industries. Mark and Laura, do you want to introduce yourselves?
Sure, I'll go first. Mark Wiley, Vice President of Sales and Business Development for MLI.
I'm Laura Mansky. I'm with the Accounting Department for Moses Lake Industries, and I'm in Twolleton.
Great, thank you. Tonight, we're here to share some information about the Moses Lake Industries Enterprise Zone Agreement, and to ask counsel to ask to approve a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign the E-zone agreement. I'll share a little bit of background on the E-zone program in Milwaukee, and Cindy will share some details about the program and information about recent projects. Milwaukee is part of the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. Moses Lake Industries is the star on this map. The North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone includes Milwaukee, Gladstone, and parts of Clackamas County. The Enterprise Zone Program, or E-zone Program, is one of the few tools the City of Milwaukee has in our economic development toolbox for business retention and recruitment. This Enterprise Zone was originally established in 1997, and it was last in front of council in July of 2019. At that time, council approved a resolution to support the redesignation of the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. And with that, I'll hand it over to Cindy to talk a little bit more in details about this project and other recent projects.
Good evening again, everyone. Again, Cindy Moore, Clackamas County Economic Development. And as Allison mentioned, I just wanted to share with you a little bit more about the Enterprise Zone purpose, the criteria, and the difference between both the three and the five-year options. So, as a general overview, Enterprise Zones are offered by the state for local jurisdictions to implement to support economic and business development opportunities. So, traded sector businesses, businesses, which are companies that sell their goods and services outside of the region, bringing in fresh new dollars to our communities, can apply for the abatement for the construction of new facilities, improvements to existing facilities, and/or new equipment. So, there's both a three-year and a five-year option to the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. And for tonight's purposes, I'm going to give, share a little bit of information on Moses Lake after I get through the criteria portion, but just wanted to make sure that there was a general understanding on the two different scenarios. So, as Allison provided in your packet, there are criteria that are associated with any Enterprise Zone project. And the criteria is the same for the most part in both the three-year and a five-year option. And those criteria include an increase in full-time permanent employment of 10% to maintain the minimum employment level during the exemption period. Companies also then enter into what's called a first source hiring agreement with the Oregon Employment Department, and what that does is allow a public-facing opportunity for positions that participants in the Enterprise Zone have available. Companies are not required to hire specifically through that referral process, although it would be awesome if that happened, but that's just something that, because the Enterprise Zone is a state program, we partner with the Oregon Employment Department to post those opportunities publicly. And then the companies pay an application fee of 0.1% of the proposed total investment, and that has been done in this case by Moses Lake. So, the difference in the three versus the five-year is basically the wages that are paid to the new employee, so that increase of 10%. And so, for the five-year criteria, compensation of new workers must be at or above 150% of the county average wage. So, Business Oregon, who administers this program on a statewide basis, has the 2019 figures for annual average wages for Clackamas County at $54,802, and 150% of that average wage is $82,203. So, those wages, as reported again by Business Oregon, are currently valid in the Enterprise Zone program through November of 2021. The difference is the three-year option is 150% of the state minimum wage. So, that's 1125 per hour, and at 150%, that would be 1686 per hour. So, that's the difference between the three and the five-year is essentially only just the wages that are paid to those new employees that are brought on as part of the Enterprise Zone project. So, with that five-year option, which is what Moses Lake is here to talk about tonight, it also includes a local approval via a written agreement with the local zone sponsor. So, in this case, for the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone, there are three sponsors: the City of Milwaukee, the City of Gladstone, and Clackamas County for the unincorporated areas. And the map that Allison had up earlier then shows all three areas. So, with this approval request, all three jurisdictions that make up the zone sponsors would need to review and approve the request by Moses Lake. So, we're here with you tonight to talk about this opportunity with the Milwaukee City Council, Clackamas County. I'm on the schedule for them for February 2nd with the Board of County Commissioners, and I'll be doing a very similar presentation to what we're doing tonight with you, and then the City of Gladstone on February 9th.
Just one quick clarification out that it matters in this particular instance, but I thought the minimum wage in the Portland Metro region was around 1350, right?
Sure, yes. But the state's minimum wage, 1125.
So, it doesn't matter where the E-zone is?
Well, for Clackamas County, for the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone, the way that the program is set up, that 150% would be of the state minimum wage. And different jurisdictions that have Enterprise Zones have different criteria associated with their zones, and when this was established, that was the criteria that was laid out. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
It does.
Okay.
Thanks.
Of course. Just to give you a flavor of the type of activity we've seen in the last couple of years, so again, this is zone-wide. In 2019, there were four projects that made up about $43 million in proposed investment and created 37 new family wage jobs. In 2020, we had one project for $5 million in proposed investment with 14 new family wage jobs. So, this is exciting, because this will be the first one for Milwaukee in the last couple of years, as those other projects were in unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. So, with that, I wanted to share a little bit about specifically Moses Lake and the project that they are proposing. And I'll just give the highlights and then turn it over to the company to share a little bit more of the details, and we can then answer any questions that you might have. So, Moses Lake Industries is expanding their Milwaukee location and building out a new advanced research center and R&amp;D battery lab. The total investment that they have posed on their application is right around just under $1 million, and they plan to add two to three jobs that meet that criteria of the 150% of the county average wage. And their estimated abatement for the year one of the program is around $18,000. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Laura and Mark to share a little bit more about their company and their proposed project before we go to questions. Thank you. Laura and Mark, take it away.
Thank you. Laura, I don't, I don't know if you mind. Do you want me to just take this and kind of give the overview? Okay, well, no, I appreciate everybody allowing us to come in and talk about our company. We actually were based up in, well, the main production facility is up, as the name suggests, in Moses Lake, Washington. MLI was founded back in 1984. We're actually a subsidiary of a Japanese chemical company, Tama Chemicals. And we, yeah, about, what was that, 2016, we actually built a facility at the same location, R&amp;D facility, and I think at that point, we spent, we must have spent over $3 million on that investment. And we had, I think, right now, we've got about 20 people that were brought up in that facility. The number on the previous page of two to three people, actually, we're, we're actually expanding very fast, so I think we're at about nine, nine people that are due for this project, and the, the investment's actually well over with the number that was on there. So, I think, yeah, lots of stuff going in here. We make, you know, we make chemicals for the semiconductor and battery industry, and so we work with people like Intel, Samsung, a bunch of the Chinese and Taiwanese, and some other Korean chipmakers. So, we've actually had many awards from Intel. I can provide a presentation if you want, just showing kind of our quality in technology development, but we've been recognized worldwide as a leader in some of the products we make. In fact, if you've got an iPhone, or if you've got one of the new, if you've got a Dell, or any kind of laptop, it has our chemistry inside of it. We actually do all the backend copper plating that's used to connect all the transistors. So, all the chip manufacturers use our, or I'd say 90-something percent use our chemistries for the, part of the manufacturing process. We decided, sorry, back in 2016, to start our office in Portland, in Milwaukee, and the reason was, is that we had a bunch of scientists, and product managers, and account managers that were based here in Portland. And so, that's why that facility got started, and we've just been growing. We've actually, since I think 2015, or a little before, we've actually doubled the size of the company. And so, it's, yeah, I mean, the industries, both the semiconductor and the battery industries are both growing dramatically. We had record sales last year, so lots of good things going on with the company. And I think a lot of growth will happen at the site in Milwaukee, even beyond the work that we're talking about. That was a really quick intro to the company, so I hope that gives you some thought. Please, feel free to ask as, any questions, or as many questions as you want, and I'll let, Laura, Laura, do you want to add any comments to that?
Well, I think when I first met with the ladies from the county, when we were talking about our, our property, our real property, they encouraged me to look into this exemption program if we were going to ever expand. And so, we had already built out the, the one section of the building that we're in, and we had the opportunity to take over an adjoining area, which is where we are going to be putting this battery lab and, and expand our, our, uh, our workspaces. So, that was, you know, really a great opportunity to, to go ahead and take advantage of the exemption programs, as we're, we're expanding into the space and into, you know, sort of the focus of what we're doing. And I suppose, Mark, you might just emphasize that it's R&amp;D that happens in its location, and we don't do any production or of, of chemicals. That all takes place in Moses Lake, Washington.
Correct. Yeah, so this, this facility actually houses a few different roles. I mentioned, so we have some of the account managers, global account managers, that do a lot of traveling around the world to talk to customers about the products. We also have product managers that handle releasing the products. And then, as Laura said, we also have a large section of the facility dedicated to research and development. So, this is science, PhD-level, masters-level scientists that are working on developing new chemistries, new techniques for, yeah, for making these chips, or the new lithium-ion lithium metal batteries. So, yeah, it's all small. I guess when you think about chemistry, you could think about, in terms of size, the typical experiments we run is, I would say, maybe 50 milliliters type size of experiments, so not much at all.
Great, thank you. Um, next up, we just have time for questions. So, any questions for either Cindy or the folks from Moses Lake?
To just add it, for personal curiosity's sake, what, what, what is this next lab that you're putting in? What's, what, specifically what area of, of research are you going to be doing?
So, we do, yeah, good question. So, it's all for, based, there's three different products that we're going to be working on, and they're all related to lithium-ion lithium metal batteries. It's actually the, we're working on the electrolyte, which is, so, just quickly go through, you have a battery, it's got two sides to it, like your, you know, your Duracell, or something like that. You've got a positive and negative side. Between those two electrodes, you've got an electrolyte. So, we're working on the next generation electrolytes, and then also, we're working on the binder materials that actually are used to stick all the stuff together. It's actually, the easiest way to think about it, is it's kind of a glue that holds all the active material together, and those are specialized polymers. Yeah, so, that's mostly what's going in that lab. Actually, the, the lab contains a fume, or a glove box, which is a, an air-free environment. That's actually probably one of the few, probably in the United States, that, it's really customized glove box, so it's, it's kind of unique in that case, too.
Cool. Well, that's, well, you guys are in the right industry right now.
Yeah.
Development headed that direction.
Yeah, it's exciting. I, you know, we're gonna, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but yeah, there's a lot of, I mean, this, you know, with all the COVID issues and the, you know, the economy kind of being hit hard, we actually, the semiconductor and the battery sides have been actually going crazy, because everybody's buying, just like we're doing right here. We're working on laptops, you know, there's been a crazy rush to get laptops, which means, or any kind of computer devices, which means you have an increase in memory and logic manufacturing, which we just were on the back end of that, so. Same with batteries, so.
I don't know if anyone else saw the news today, but there, there was a announcement that somebody has finally done a, like, production-scale battery for EVs that can charge in just five minutes. And I think that part of that innovation was probably in the electrolytes, and I, I'm hearing that you do not work on this particular type of battery, but just as another illustration of places where batteries are becoming ever more essential in our world, there's several of us on the screen with you here, Mark, are, are EV owners, so it's a field we take interest in.
Okay, great, yeah. Actually, my PhD is in electrochemical engineering, so I'm on, actually, my background's all in electrochemistry. And, yeah, we actually do work. I mean, that's the kind of, so we work on the electrolytes. So, if you want to go even more technical, we do, we're really working on the polymer electrolytes, which is the next generation past. Right now, it's all liquid. We're going to polymer, and that's what our expertise is in terms of manufacturing. So, yeah, the, you know, the, there's a lot, there's just a lot of development going on, and innovation's happening with it.
Yeah. Well, it's always interesting to hear about what's going on in the, in the industrial area, because I, I feel like we have a lot of businesses out there that, that we don't have a lot of opportunity to, to have this kind of connection with, so I appreciate learning more about what you're up to.
Stop by anytime. We're open. You guys can come through. We'll give you a tour, show you all the cool stuff.
I will definitely take you up on that.
Then you can listen to me talk even more, so.
Awesome.
I, I have a question. I know you, you said it, it sounds very specialized, PhD, masters level. I'm just wondering, the teacher in me, is there, is, do you guys have a program in place that, like, you could get, or high school kids to come in there, you know, and show them what it's all about, and, you know, our next generation of scientists and things?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. We, we, we actually did, before we did a bunch of college students, we had some internships and things like that. We'd be happy to, you know, entertain that kind of engagement. And the only, we have two issues with that usually. One is the intellectual property part of it, and the second is just the safety, you know. So, but with that said, I mean, there's tons of space to have students even come in and just understand what's going on, learn about batteries, that kind of stuff. But, yeah, we're, we're open. We're a private company. We, you know, we're pretty, pretty loose in terms of, right, you know, allowing different, you know, opportunities when they come along like this to, to go forward. So, yeah, let us know if you, if you've got a good idea. We also, just so we make it clear, there's P, we, we've got everything at this facility from PhD all the way down to technician level, so it's not just these PhDs. You actually also have technical operators that are mostly running the experiments, so more on the bachelor's or not even bachelor's level, so.
All right. So, any, does anybody have any questions about the, what we're actually here to decide? I know I had, I had sent out a couple of questions earlier in the day, and got some of those answered. The one piece I didn't see come in, and maybe it came in late, was, you know, this is a, this is for- The one piece I didn't see come in, and maybe it came in late, was, you know, this is a, this is, this, the city and the county foregoing property taxes for five years to help enable this investment and see more people employed. But I was curious what the differential was in property taxes in five years.
Okay, I can speak to that. And we did provide the information just before the council meeting. So I came prepared, ended this conversation to have those numbers at the ready. So I believe if I understand your question, it would be what would the tax liability be on the sixth year? And how much would the company then be paying in taxes for this investment? Is that my understanding you correctly?
The differential between, I don't need to know what they're being, going to pay in taxes. The differential between what they're currently paying and then five years from now, what they would be paying because of the investment, because of the increased property value of the.
Okay. Well, then I apologize. We're going to have to recraft those numbers for you. I didn't come prepared with, with that type of detail. We can certainly get that for you. My understanding was more along the lines of what would the tax implications be on the sixth year, given what the abatement had been for the first five. So my apologies on that. I can certainly take your question back to the assessor's office, who I need to thank publicly for their assistance in pulling together these numbers, too. But certainly we can get that information for you.
Yeah, those would be, you know, that kind of information would be useful to councils. I'm sure it's going to be something that the commission will, will be curious about, too, when, when it goes before them.
Certainly. Absolutely. I'll work with Allison on that and we'll get it back to you exactly how you worded it.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, since you have those numbers, Cindy, I would be curious. That also sounds interesting.
Cindy, I do have some records from 2020. It looks like we pay about $40,000 a year right now in property tax. For that ability.
Thank you, Laura.
So then you know, Cindy, what it would be in six years?
Sure. We kept it specific to this application and that almost million dollar investment that the company listed on their application that would be the investment for this project. So with that, on the sixth year then, it would be, let me just pull that for you. Hold on just a moment. Sorry, I had that, that I had that right here. Okay, one second. It's just loading. That'd be about $4,500.
Additional?
That would be, so on the sixth year, that would be then what the company would pay in addition for this specific investment.
Yeah. So that, that was the answer that I was looking for, the differential. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, thanks to Laura for their contribution there.
And Cindy, that's just the city of Milwaukee portion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for clarifying that. That is strictly just the city of Milwaukee portion. We have numbers for Clackamas County as well. And then for Gladstone, since there's no tax liability there, that would not be applicable.
So then the 1850 or however much, I don't have that number in front of me. Is that just Milwaukee or is that Milwaukee and Clackamas combined?
Great question, ma'am. That is the entirety of the tax role. So every taxing district that is incorporated into the North Urban Clackamas County zone that would be impacted, that's what that 18,000 number is. That's the total abatement that the company estimate, I will say that again, estimated abatement for what the company would be receiving.
Okay. So, so I think what is going to be useful to policymakers when they're making these decisions is to be able to do that math and say, okay, we're investing X from our city in this company so that they can expand, so they can bring in more employees. And then down the road, it will take us eight years to make that back or six years. Or, you know, we can do the math in our head once we know what, what we're investing right now and then what differential will be afterwards. So that's.
Appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
And it's, I think it's important just to, you know, folks watching, the taxpayers, because a lot of times programs like this get a, get a hard rap because I think in a lot of states they're used poorly. I think Louisiana is one of the shining examples of, of how poorly they get used. But, you know, in the instances like this, that it is a good investment and it does benefit the community in the long term. And I think that it's important to illustrate that to folks in real numbers so that, so that there isn't that feeling out there.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. And one other thing I'd like to mention, too, is the abatement is only received if the company does make the investment. So I just want to make sure for the general public, so you're aware, this, the abatement would only then be realized by the company based upon the investments that they do as indicated in their application.
Both the investment and the minimum hiring, additional hiring, right?
Correct. They would need to meet all the requirements and that is monitored. We do annual claim reports that the company will submit and our assessor's office and myself review those documents to make sure everything's in line.
Good.
So.
Lisa?
Yeah. Can I ask, you mentioned that Gladstone has no, this has no tax implications for Gladstone. But just because they're part of the enterprise zone, it has to go to them for approval?
Correct. All, the, the way it's laid out in statute is that whatever jurisdictions participate as zone sponsors, then approvals such as this one that need to go to one council go to all sponsoring councils.
So that means since we haven't seen any of these, that nobody else has gone for the five-year setup? We haven't seen one from Gladstone or from unincorporated in the last few years?
That is a great question. And no, we have not to the five-year level. So three years, there's not the additional written requirement that you are entertaining tonight for consideration and approval. So the three-year ones we administer at the staff level, but there has not been any other five-year opportunities that have come forward from Milwaukee.
Or from Gladstone.
Or from Gladstone. Exactly. Gladstone just came in, in 2019 when we did the modification. So they're brand new.
Okay. Anybody else any questions?
I'd say that's part of why Cindy and Jackie at Gladstone wanted to come to Milwaukee first, kind of as they're doing this order of approvals, come to Milwaukee first for this one.
Thank you, Allison.
Well, you know, I think, I think this is a, this is the kind of way that cities hope and intend programs like this will get used. And it's particularly exciting that it's in the field that it is, which is, you know, one of the fields that we need to encourage and grow and, and see flourish to solve a lot of the problems that we have. And the solution to climate change on a lot of levels rests on battery technology. So it'll be, it'll be cool to watch you guys do what you do. All right. Well, I would entertain a motion then if there is no further questions or discussion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to approve an enterprise zone agreement for Moses Lake Industries in the North Urban Clackamas Enterprise Zone.
A second?
Has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to approve an enterprise zone agreement for Moses Lake Industries in the North Urban Clackamas Enterprise Zone. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? None heard or seen? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, I, we, I know that I for one will definitely take you up, maybe after COVID, on coming to see what you have going on.
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, and I think it was Desi, if, again, I think you have my email or you can get my email probably through these people, feel free to send me an email if you have some ideas about it. High school or college students that want to get involved and just see what's going on.
I will take you up on that.
No problem.
And mayor, we'll just add it on to our tracker list for about four months from now and we'll check in at that point. Scott, when I say we, would you please add it to our tracker list and we will check in? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Yeah, thanks again.
Okay. So our next item is our Sparrow site goals, a discussion. And this will be led by our community development director, Leila Amah, and our development project manager, Allison Wicks.
Well, good evening, mayor and counselors. I think Allison's working on getting the PowerPoint up and she'll lead us into the discussion and looking forward to talking with you about Sparrow.
Yep, just switching gears here. All right. So again, I'm Allison Wicks. I'm the development project manager for the city of Milwaukee. And Leila and I are here to check in on the Sparrow Street site project goals. And so a little bit of background information, the Sparrow Street site is located in the Island Station neighborhood in close, close proximity to the Trolley Trail, the Orange Line Max Park Station, the Kronberg Trail and downtown Milwaukee. And the city purchased the site in 2019 from Trimat for the purpose of land baking for affordable housing. Our prospective purchaser agreement with Trimat requires the city to develop a remedial action plan by August 2023. And the site plan we create will guide where cleanup takes place. This year, the city also received a grant from Business Oregon to support this work. This is sort of a high level, five-year timeline for the project. So we have a five-year timeline for our Trimat IGA, our remedial action plan with DEQ and our Business Oregon grant. We have extended our deadlines for those through August 2023. And then this year, so early 2021, we're going to release a request for qualifications for a development partner for the site. And this will align nicely with our housing code adoption this summer, summer 2021. And in the fall, we'll roll into site design and then the remedial action plan work in 2022 and hopefully land use permitting construction in 2023. Our sort of immediate next steps for this project are, we're here tonight to confirm project goals. Then in spring and in, or in March 2021, we'll come back to council for a resolution for those project goals, a hearing to declare the property surplus and to authorize that request for qualifications. That may take more than one future meeting. Then in summer 2021, we'll select a project team via that request for qualifications. And then in fall, this fall, start the site design process. And one update that we do have, Leila's going to share a little bit about site access.
Thanks, Allison. So it's good to be back. I think we talked and set these goals a year ago. And so as we started to get Sparrow back off, back up and running, we thought it would be a good idea to come back and speak with you about the goals that you set last year, discuss those and make sure they're still in alignment with where you are. And if not, change them. So this is an opportunity to, to weigh in on those again. And taking through the project, we started taking a closer look at some of the issues. Coho has been a great opportunity for us to approach a lot of issues. And so we kind of took that same lens when we looked at Sparrow. And one of the key things that is challenging about this site is its access in both for safety, for fire access, as well as vehicular access to the site. So what I am proposing to do is set aside some, some due diligence resources. And I've been working with the city engineer to come up with a conceptual design for site access so that we kind of have a bit of a head start on that discussion because there's a lot of implications related to that. There's going to need to be some coordination with some property owners. So that's one of the first steps that this team will take, assuming that council's supportive of this approach. We would be speaking likely with Trimat and some adjoining neighbors to start to work towards what a design solution could be for accessing the site. And so we'll be looking at options on 25th and 26th and then Sparrow Street as well. And the point of that is to really get some rough order of magnitude costs estimates as well. Because we do expect with the redevelopment of the Sparrow site, it will trigger some frontage improvements along Sparrow Street as well. And so we kind of walk, to walk into this RFQ and design process with our eyes wide open about what those implications are, what will need to take place in order to gain access to the site, before we start launching into a long discussion around what the site design will be. We first want to see how and how much will it cost for us to access the site. Staff's proposing to do that concurrent with the other aspects of the project, so it's not slowing us down. And we are currently working with the city engineer to develop a scope of work for an engineering consultant to assist us with some survey work in those conceptual designs. And I think the next slide, Allison, just has some images that sort of show, we have some, there's some grade issues. There's some tight corners that we have to try to navigate. And all of that within mind of how do we get fire vehicles into this space? And how do we develop the site safely? So I expect that we will have a scope of work within the next week or so. We've been working on that for the last several weeks and hopefully execute that contract within the next couple of weeks and get moving on that. And we will keep council apprised of that. We'll likely be doing some outreach to the neighborhood organization as well in advance of that work. Right now, we're just in the final stages of scoping and getting that work under contract. Do folks have any questions about, about that piece or concerns about, about that approach? Great. And if you do, you can always tell me now or later. So what, the next two slides, three slides, I think, outline what the goals were that you, the council decided on last year. The first is the affordable housing component. It's been very clear from the start and the intent of the purchase of this property was to help those the most in need. And so council, when we looked at the current zoning on that site is R5. I think you're all well aware, Vera did a wonderful update on our, our housing code work that we're well on our way to adopting a new code, or at least having code, adoption ready code language by June that will likely impact what can be developed on this site. So we were somewhat, you know, intentional about the timing of this. We took advantage of the delay of COVID and then looked at when this new code will be coming in and designed our work plan around that. So when we spoke with you last time, we, the current R5 zoning would allow about eight to nine units on that. And what we heard you say is that if it's eight to nine units, we want those all to be zero to 30%. And so we heard that loud and clear. What you also said is that if there's additional units that we're able to lever beyond that, whether it was through at that time a variance or it's a new code adopted, that you would consider additional units up to 60% or below area median income. And so I think what I'll do is I'll run through the list and then we can kind of come back to this so that you can see kind of what you came up with and talk about each goal in detail. Does that work for everyone? Okay. So the second one was unit size. We heard pretty clearly from you that we're looking for larger units. So two and three bedroom family sized units. So that would be another criteria that we would look at. Affirmative outreach. So the outreach plan, so this would be of the developer and the management company that would be leasing or selling these, would be to provide information to attract eligible persons from all racial, ethnic and gender groups into the housing market. So it's an affirmative outreach program. We would also be looking for contractors that would be interested in putting in a good faith effort to utilize minority women and emerging small business companies in their contracting. So that will be also part of what we would put into our RFQ. You also asked us to consider tree canopy. Conveniently, that's also being wrapped into the housing code work, but that is also something that we would put into the RFQ to make it really clear to respondents that we have a very deep interest in maintaining the tree canopy that's there and enhancing that and perhaps using it as an advantage for the site. And then finally, energy efficient design. So we will be looking for. we will be looking for development partners that are practiced in the use of energy-efficient construction methods, such things as, you know, net zero, passive house, solar, green roofs, et cetera. So that would be a big part of what we're looking at as well. We would also be looking for development partners that have the financial capacity to pull something like this off, or have a good track record of obtaining tax credits, et cetera. So we will be looking for folks that have experience and the ability to do something like this. And then finally, the ability to deliver. So that'll be also very important to us, too, is that they're able to commence construction as soon as they can, based upon the different factors that are involved. As Allison mentioned, you know, we have a site design process, and then we did get approval from DEQ for another two-year extension on that remedial action plan. But the site design comes first, then it goes to DEQ. We do a remedial action plan based on that site design. And once DEQ approves that, then we actually have to do the cleanup, then we can move towards actual development. So there's a number of steps between the point at which we have a site design, and to which we can actually break ground. So we're moving as quickly as we can, and there's just a lot of moving parts with it. So those are the project goals that you all set up, I believe it was last February. And Allison, if you'd be so kind to reverse us back to Slide 1, we can just start there, if the council's okay with that, and just talk through each of these. And if there's additional things that you would like to have us consider, we very much want to hear that.
Well, I have a question that's, it's more related to how we are, so we know we're going to have access. And we're going to have to figure out how to get into the site. And we weren't as clear about that when we set these goals initially. So is there any reason to be concerned about the viability of what we want to do, given that we may need to, somewhere along the line, someone is going to have to spend some money from somewhere to make it possible for us to get in and out of the site? Is that changing the bottom line of this project, or will that be financed out of a different pot of money?
That's a great question. And that's primarily, one of the main reasons why we're doing this investigation, is to understand what is the cost. Because if the cost is really high, that might be a very high bar for an affordable housing developer to carry. And so part of this effort is to get that information, to share that back with you once we have a better understanding of what that is, and to determine whether or not there are other avenues by which we could pursue those improvements. What we didn't want to do is enter into an RFQ process, go through this process, and then figure out, this is a $2 million investment that might be needed. I'm just throwing numbers out there, that may not be it. But we at least wanted some order of magnitude of understanding, so that if that does present itself as a barrier, we can have a discussion about that before we get too far down the track in terms of what site design, and what commitments we've made around what the site can actually accomplish.
Yeah, that's helpful to know, Leila, because I look at this, and I think this still represents the values. You know, we are still in a housing crisis, we're still having, I think I just yesterday read an article that said there's only three weeks of housing inventory if you are looking to buy a house. Now, that doesn't reflect the reality that people who are earning 30% of AMI are dealing with, but it does reflect how squeezed housing opportunities are for everyone. So I still see the need in the area and in our community to provide this in Milwaukee if we can. I just wanted to be sure that this was a realistic goal. And if we need to include market rate units, or whatever it is that would make the project viable, then I personally would be open to having that conversation.
So to go way back, when this all started, I talked Trimat into selling us that on the concept that we were working on trying to provide housing for homeless families, school-aged families. That was the concept. Now, I know that for various stupid federal laws, we won't be able to require that that's the folks that necessarily get the units. But that certainly needs to be the direction we're targeting, not only because that's what we agreed to with Trimat, but that's where there is a huge amount of need. I don't know the current numbers, but at the time, there were something like 450 school-aged children that were homeless in North Clackamas School District. At the time, Chuck, the engineer, and I met with the fire marshal, and talked about a lot of ideas. And it was determined that they wouldn't need to be able to pull into the property and then have a turnaround. So I don't want us to end up for whatever, this is how we usually do it, or kind of whatever other reasons, we end up down some rabbit hole where all of a sudden the access is $2 million. I think solutions are, we need to be a little creative, and we need to remember what the target is. The target is getting families with children off the street. And I will be pretty fiercely defending that goal.
Yeah, and we hear that. And I think there are ways that we can craft the RFQ to make that very clear in a way that's fair and legal. I will say, just to add to your point, that we are not starting, we're not reinventing the wheel with respect to access. We've done a lot of digging through what was already done, and the work that you did with the Fire District and Trimat agreed that there are alternative designs in terms of, if we had to have a turnaround on that site, we wouldn't have any room for housing. And so part of our engagement, too, with the city engineer, is to look at what kind of alternative design solutions could be put in place that would be lower cost, that would still deliver the needs in terms of access. And so, so we're looking at it with a very, I think, flexible view of what that means, in terms of trying to meet it in the most cost-efficient way, the least impactful way in terms of adjacent properties. And the adjacent properties, I should note, that we would be likely impacting are owned by Trimat, and we're going to be reaching out to them after this meeting to have a more in-depth discussion about what that looks like. So just in case any neighbors are looking at this, is that's what we're doing. But we do want to talk to adjoining neighbors to make them aware of what's happening. But we hear you loud and clear. And I would say that in speaking with the city engineer, I think that he and I are both of the mind of creative solution problems, problem-solving with creative solutions. And so our goal would be to try to do this conceptual design work, and bring it back to you before the RFQ goes on the street, to both address what Councilor Heisey brought up in terms of costs, and to also just give you an update in terms of where we are with what that looks like.
Cool. Thank you.
Leila, there's also a question in the chat, if you don't mind pulling it up and responding. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then Lisa, I think, has a question.
Okay, the question is, would these homes be offered to people that are already in Milwaukee or outside of Milwaukee? And the question is that there is some sort of legal issues that we have to deal with in terms of who and how we select folks. But I think that the folks that will move here will be ultimately Milwaukeeans. So I can research that a little bit more. I don't want to answer it without saying, but I don't believe that we're allowed to pre-select who will live in these units. But they, you know, ideally, these folks will become members of our community. The second part of the question or statement, I'll just read it, is the property has many large trees, and since the city talks about tree canopy, leaving these large trees untouched is very important. Thank you, Pam, and we hear you loud and clear. That is a goal of our council, and it is a fundamental goal of the housing code work that we're working on as well. So trees will be an important part of both preservation of trees, and then the design.
And I'll just add that the trees are in the portion, most of the trees are in the portion of the site that's also steeply sloped. So most likely, most of the trees are not really in the developable portion of the site.
Thanks, Allison. That's exactly right. There's another comment that I just will read out loud. So it's, what is the current engineer's cost estimate of the project, including access? So that's a question from Charles Byrd. And Charles, that's what we're trying to find out. So we'll be looking into that and trying to get a rough order of magnitude cost. And then we will be able to understand, I'm not sure I understand the question of the ongoing cost to the city per year, but it would likely be included in our maintenance.
Lisa?
No, my question was, in looking at your first question, I guess, and I read it over, I mean, I read it in the staff report, and I was like, oh, why don't we just say under 60%? But I, I mean, I guess all of this seems predicated on the idea that they're going to be rental units. And until we have, I think there are some good models out there of building affordable townhomes and things like that, and having some ownership potential for people. And so I guess I would just want to maintain that flexibility in the RFQ, and not focus too much on whether it's 30 or 60, because I would want to maintain that flexibility to try to create some ownership opportunity.
Are you aware of any programs that help families who are currently homeless have an ownership in a townhome? Because I have yet to read of a program like that.
Um, well, I just know there was a townhome development in East Portland that was, I don't know if the families were currently homeless. I know they managed to keep the price of townhomes to like $150,000. So they were, you know, they met affordability thresholds for people of, you know, at 60% or whatever. And I don't know, it may not be possible. But I just would hate to see us foreclose it.
I think that there are models, you know, if you look at, I'm going to blank on the name, because I'm having a hard time with names today. But in Eugene, there's the example of, is it Emerald Village, where it's not necessarily that you're owning a townhome, but there is a mechanism in place to build equity as someone who is living in the units. And I believe that those are available to people who are pretty low income. I'm thinking of our conversations around Hillside, and the residents there, and some of the clients that Clackamas County is looking to serve on that site, which is varied. It's not only zero to 30 AMI, but generally, in conversations I'm having, I'm hearing that people who are very low income often, often need a fair amount of support. And I'm not sure that they're necessarily going to be in a good place to be homeowners, given that. So I would hope that there would be that opportunity, just like you, Councilor Beatty. I hear what you're saying about flexibility. I'm not sure if it's realistic for that segment. 60% maybe, seems more likely from just what I've seen.
Yeah, there is a program where people living in certain units, the rent that they're paying is going into a program that then they're building up equity that can be used for education, for buying a house, for, seemed like there was a couple other things, college, I think, is one of them. And we had talked clear back when all this started with Clackamas County, with Rich Swift, about, you know, doing that on this property. But it's not an ownership model. It's not, it's different.
Yeah, there's some services that organizations, so typically the 0 to 30%, as you rightly said, is really kind of that folks that are either houseless and moving into housing. So it's a very, kind of, I don't know, sort of tender, sort of, segment of the population. And what you're describing, too, Mayor, is there's a sort of an ID, IDAs, I think they're called, so independent savings and accounts. And so those are sometimes tools that service providers can use to help folks save. And there's typically a matching portion that goes with it. So those kinds of associated services are really critical and important as part of a 0 to 30% type of housing project. And it's certainly something that we can work with the county and others, once we get a development partner in place, and we have a service provider, to start to talk to them about ways that they can incorporate as many tools as possible to assist the folks that would be living in this space.
Leila, just a couple of things I wanted to add. One is, if we could add the Trimat agreement when we do the next update, just so that everybody has it, since we've had turnover on council. I realized that I didn't include that. The second piece is, there's been some questions that have been coming in. We really don't have, we don't have any enough information to even look at what kinds of costs this could be, or where the money would come from, or what the cap would be. And it's up to council for us to bring that back and to talk about what priorities council wants. So that will be, we'll make sure that individuals who are on here tonight receive information about the meeting. But that is something that we'll be doing in the future, and it's still several months out. This will take us time. In terms of engagement with the community, I believe there's actually a timeline on here. So if we can, at some point, go back to that, or go to that, that would be helpful. But that's all I have. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, in terms of, oh, sorry. Call it out, but the site design process would be kind of when we're talking about the, or talking with the community. So it would be part of the community engagement process. We're here in February of last year, we did talk about the community engagement levels, and kind of the IAP2 levels that this project would be going through. So we'll continue to work on that, and kind of, as allowed with COVID restrictions. So likely using our Engage Milwaukee page, too.
Otherwise, other than the comment about homeownership, I thought the goals looked great. I thought, you know, I don't see anything that I would change.
I would, one little comment on that, when talking about the environmental, energy efficiency portion of it. The way it's currently worded, it's almost like a green roof is an alternate choice to net zero, or passive, or something like that. And it's apples and oranges. So it probably wants to be reworded.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that there's one additional question in chat about, is the timeline the same for properties who will be affected by the access discussion, in terms of what point in the process will the city be reaching out to engage with those folks?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so we'll begin that rather immediately. So we'll be doing outreach and having conversations with adjacent property owners. We'll likely try to get the contracts underway, so we have our engineers on board, look at the surrounding properties, identify the folks that would be, we would want to engage with, and then start doing that outreach. So I would expect that, and certainly folks, if there are folks that are listening tonight, that have a keen interest, please reach out to me directly, or to Allison, and we'll be glad to, just so we can connect with you. And then we will be reaching out early. That's why we wanted to do this part of it early, is that's kind of is that's kind of the beginning of the engagement is around the access. But as Allison pointed out, the engagement will be happening throughout the design process, once we have a developer selected.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Great.
Thank you very much. Awesome.
Thank you. So we'll refine these, take your feedback from tonight. We'll probably put them in the form of a resolution. And we'll be back in a little while to talk with you through those. Since there wasn't any stark changes, I feel like we could probably move to that next stage and do the property surplus piece. And then, once I have the contract for the engineering work underway, I'll provide you with an update on the timing of that as well. And we'll be hopefully hearing and connecting with folks in the neighborhood soon.
Great. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's see. The next item is the Audit Committee Expansion, a discussion. This will be led by our Finance Director, Bonnie Dennis.
Hi, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to discuss with you the option to amend the bylaws for the Audit Committee. The amendment, well, let me give you a brief history first, before going into the, the details of the amendment. The Audit Committee was formed in 2012, and at that time, it was comprised of two council members and one community member. And not long after that, in 2013, City Council adopted another amendment to change the bylaws by increasing the number of community members, and also including a budget committee member. So at that time, and as of today, we have an Audit Committee comprised of one council member, one budget committee member, and two community members. The Audit Committee meets about two, maybe three times a year. And basically, what the Audit Committee does is, they oversee the review of the financial statements with the external auditors. They are also a key component in trying to find the external auditors for the city audits. So in April of last year, one of our long-term Audit Committee members, Troy Recklin, had reached his term limits. And so we were left without a, a community member for the Audit Committee. And through a long process, we went through and finally received two wonderful applicants. And during the interview process, the panel discussed, why is it that we only have two community members? Why can we not add a third? So then we brought that back and posed the question to the Audit Committee members, and they all agreed to try to see if we can amend the bylaws and bring this back forward to City Council for consideration, and increase the, the total number of Audit Committee members from four to five. And then with that, I'm going to open it up for discussion for everyone.
I would just add, we also made it flexible, so that if we are unable to fulfill those seats, that we are able to continue to meet and have a quorum. This is a hard seat for us to fill. We're really lucky right now, that we have incredible applicants. And so we wanted to take advantage of that. So thank you to the council members who were involved in the process.
Yeah, I'll just say, as the council member on the Audit Committee currently, I would love to have additional people. We've got really great people on the committee right now. And losing Troy was hard, just because he was such a terrific and committed person. You know, the responsibility that the, the community members on this committee in particular bear, I think, is, is a really important one, because it's, it's a critical financial accountability piece. And you need people who have the acumen and the skills to understand what we're talking about, and to ask hard questions. Because we want to, you know, this is all about catching fraud. This is all about really making sure that every dollar that the city spends is going where we say it is. So I don't think that it's a place where, where we can fall short. And to have two people who are interested in to expand the committee by one seems like just a, a great opportunity to me. I don't see any, any cost in that.
And I will say, I don't know how come I was on the interview panel, since you were the one on the Audit Committee, but--
Because you filled out the survey before I did. So thank you.
I thought they were both, yeah, really strong candidates. And so, yeah, we didn't want to really say no to either one. And the Audit Committee citizen member who was on the interview panel, he was also very, you know, excited. Because he himself is not a CPA, I think. And so he was excited to have a CPA back in the mix, because Troy brought that. And Troy is not there anymore. So, yeah. I see no downside, as long as the flexibility is built into the, to the bylaws. I see no downside.
Either. Any other conversation further? So you're gonna, what, put this on a consent agenda or something?
Yeah, it's set for, I think, the February 2nd meeting.
Okay, cool.
And at that time, we'll also appoint the other two members that were interviewed recently.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the Council President election. So we can have a conversation, and somebody can make a motion, unless somebody already has some idea.
Well, why don't I start, since I'm the current council president, if that's okay? You know, I didn't have to step in often, because the mayor is so good about attendance, even one running for Congress. So, but it was an important, you know, it was something that I, you know, I was really honored to do. And it provided a good, you know, a good opportunity for me to grow and learn. And I would be honored to serve, to continue serving in that role. But just like I was nominated last time, two years ago, to do it, I would be happy to pass the baton. And I think with Councilor Heisey having been on for two years, and Councilor Beatty having served as council president before, and really appreciated, you know, that, that she's done this before, and, and has had that experience, I think it's, you know, I, it would be, I think, a really wise move for us to, to nominate and support Kathy Heisey as our next council president.
I'd be happy to second that, if that's a motion.
That is a motion.
All right. Very good. Well, that was easy. Let's see. It has been moved--
By Councilor Heisey's smile that she would accept that.
She didn't run screaming from the room, so I, I accepted that as--
I would be honored. It's, it's, this is, working with you all has been such, such a wonderful experience. And it continues to be a wonderful experience. And I have so appreciated the growth opportunities that, that it provides me. And this is another one. And I would fully expect to continue this tradition of passing the baton, so that we continue to bring more experience in, as we gain new members.
Cool. Good tradition. All right. So it has been moved and seconded to nominate Kathy Heisey to serve as council president. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
Scott, how do I rename myself? I did an update, and it, like, I can't do it as easily as I used to.
You'd be able to hit the little buttons. I can do it real quick for you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, we're not gonna be on that much longer. You haven't--
Yeah, but, you know--
You can wait.
This is what a, a transfer of power looks like when it's done right. Cool.
Thank you.
Council reports.
And this is, I believe, where you wanted to talk about the resolution tonight.
Yes.
So did everybody get a chance to look at that? Thoughts, improvements?
So I have heard from a couple of councilors now with some concerns. And I, I think we should wait. I feel like this could be an appropriate place to have a discussion about what the resolution was about. But I, I feel like the resolution, as they would say in Quaker Land, has not been sufficiently seasoned, given what I've heard from my fellow councilors. Not to, not to vague book to the public here, but the resolution is one that I proposed very late today. And it was a response to the events that happened on January 6th in our nation's capital. And it was also with regard to some very bigoted and painful and alarming statements that have come to light from a newly elected county commissioner in Clackamas. I want the public to know that these are, these are things that we are thinking about and discussing, and care about deeply. So we do want to make a statement about them. I'm just not sure we've got the statement just yet.
Well, and on the latter one, we have joined a statement, all of us joined a statement that was made by county leaders. And we were the first city council, I believe, to have joined it in full. I think since then, a couple of other city councils may have reached that. But, you know, we were quick on joining the call for Mr. Commissioner Scholz's resignation. And I don't think anything about that has really changed.
Yeah. And I wanted to make sure that if we were going to have a conversation tonight, that, that that conversation really, that we didn't get distracted by wordsmithing a resolution on some really important topics. And so I think it, I think I would, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I don't have prepared remarks, but I will just reiterate what I've said before, which was, I was absolutely appalled to read everything that I had, that I saw, collected, from Commissioner Scholz's various ramblings on, on social media. I intentionally did not link to the collection, because I think they were so horrendous and so just terrible, that I think the statements that we all made, very, you know, publicly, said everything you needed to know about just how disgusting they were. I think his recent limited apology was disingenuous. It, it certainly didn't, the scope, it certainly didn't address the scope of his harm in many, many ways, and in many communities. And I, I continue to call for his immediate resignation.
Yeah. Unless something changed, I believe that the, there at least was a motion this morning at the, at the Clackamas County Budget Committee, for the Budget Committee to call for him to resign. And I did not get to find out how that played out. But, and then the motion included, basically, defunding him entirely. Staff, wages, benefits, the works, if he chose not to resign. So I'll be curious to hear how that played out. Yeah, I mean, it's bad enough that he said those things, and that he's now been elected. But somebody who is of the mind that could say something like that, is going to be a dangerous person to have representing Clackamas County, and, and making really important, you know, Clackamas County controls health, housing, and human services. So the control of, of services to the most vulnerable people in our population runs through those hands. And that chills me. And I, I think we should continue to endeavor to do everything we can to get him to resign. And barring that, I guess, recall next May, I guess, as soon as we can do it. But that is not the kind of person that should be making those kind of decisions.
And I want to say a word about cancel culture, because we, we hear that term a lot these days. And, and I think it is a real force in society today. And I, I do feel like we often, we have developed a reflex that is unhealthy, that is to just repudiate and immediately turn away from, and not seek opportunities to engage with people we don't agree with. I want to be very clear that in, in reading Commissioner Scholz's record on public, on social media, this is not an example of cancel culture. It is an example of calling out someone who has demonstrated that they have some deeply seeded beliefs that are, as the mayor already said, dangerous. There is a, there is a difference there between not being willing to forgive, and recognizing that someone represents values that are, seem to be pretty deeply held, and, and represent something that can really cause harm to the public, when it is someone who is in a leadership position like that.
As somebody who lived in a majority Muslim country for six years, and our son's middle name is, would be considered Muslim, I just want people to remember, words have power. And as we've witnessed, and understand that words have the ability to help, to heal, but also to hurt, harm, humiliate, and humble people. So we need to keep that in mind. Words have power.
And I'll also add that the, the remarks that have gotten a lot of attention are toward the Muslim community. He also had numerous bigoted statements that were about other, other people who are often disadvantaged, including the LGBTQ community, which I represent. So there is a personal element.
So I guess-- There's, so I take it that folks have an issue with the way this was worded, and want it to be worded more strongly, or more effectively, or more something or other?
I think more different. I can, you know, I, I can, trying to think of how we move forward. There, there were problems with a substantial portion of it. We, particularly the piece where I talked about the fairness doctrine. And I think that's legitimate. And I think that's part of what Councilor Faulkner was speaking to, about not wanting to pull attention away from the matter that's really in front of us. And, and I want to respect that. So let's just come back to it. I, I feel like there's, we can still pull a good resolution together. I feel like the conversation we're having right now is the one that we needed to have in a timely fashion. And we can, we can noodle on how we write the resolution proper until our next meeting in February.
Mayor, I would also just want to add, this council has approved a couple of resolutions over the last four years, that I know about, around issues of hate, and around inclusion. And so those are things that I just also would love to pass along to, to Council President Heisey. I'm gonna, that's gonna take some time practicing. I'll work on it. But we'll make sure that those come over. I do just want to add two cents. In, in this seat, I don't get involved in elections-- In, in this seat, I don't get involved in elections, and I can't. But what I can say is it means a lot to staff and to the community when you all stand against hate. And I know this is something that is important to them, so I appreciate you talking about it on air tonight. I also appreciate that you all are going to take further action around standing against these types of things, because it allows me then to post it on our Facebook page and to share it with staff. So I'm, I'm just adding what I can to this statement, which is, I think that these are moments where words do have a lot of power. And they have a lot of power for people who do work here, who are Muslim, and who are LGBTQIA, who are, who are not a part of the, the white cisgendered culture. And so I really appreciate that you all are spending some time on it and, and trying to find a way to do this, right? It also goes along with all the work we've been doing around equity. And it shows that we, we stand. We don't just say it once, we stand when it's important. So thank you all.
All righty.
I'm adding it to the conversation for the second, and we will actually have it as conversation, not just as consent. So we will make sure that you all have some time to discuss this further.
Okay. Are there any other council reports or anything?
I guess we'll talk next time about legislation. I'm, I'm planning to do, I don't know who else is, I'm planning to do the LOC Legislative Day on the 28th. I did learn in the course of working on the, on the Marine Board issue, that there is a bill to reorganize the Marine Board's makeup and charter. I don't know if it'll have legs or not, but I'll share that. I'll share whatever I can find out about it before our February meeting.
Yeah, and as the bills are starting to roll out in earnest, I think there are some, some bills that we'll want to track that are related to climate in particular, that that hadn't been on our radar previously, that actually our own representative power is co-sponsoring. So, but we can talk about that more in February.
Okay. Anything else? Debbie?
I motion to adjourn. I moved to adjourn.
There you go.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Welcome to your new important role, Counselor Nicodemus. We appreciate you doing it.